Call this meeting in the common council to order. Roll call, please.
Miller?
Here.
Lars?
Here.
Horn?
Here.
Kraus?
Here.
Roth?
Here.
Byer?
Here.
Peachey?
Here.
Council President Brandl is excused this evening. At this time, we'll entertain public participation. Anyone wishing to address the council may do so. We ask that you please address the council from the podium and state your name and address for the record. There being no one, move on to the important stuff. It is my extreme pleasure tonight to read a proclamation to honor Bruce Whitmore, the first runner-up in the 2015 Wisconsin Firefighter of the Year dated today's date, March 31st. Whereas Bruce Whitmore has been a volunteer City of Jefferson firefighter since joining the department 27 years ago on January 4th, 1988. And whereas his selection as first runner-up Wisconsin firefighter of the year is due largely to his many years of dedication to the Jefferson Fire Department, having served with honor and dignity in all of his roles in the department, including firefighter, recording secretary, head apparatus driver, and president of the Jefferson County Firefighters Association. And whereas firefighter Whitmore's commitment and dedication to the Jefferson fire service is highlighted by an impressive attendance record, which includes responding to over eighty percent of, eighty-seven percent of all fire calls over the past 12 years, and attending over ninety percent, seventy, excuse me, ninety-seven percent of all meetings and training events. And whereas through firefighter Whitmore's commitment and hard work has enabled the Jefferson Fire Department to deliver quality fire suppression services to the community. And whereas firefighter Whitmore is a committed and knowledgeable volunteer firefighter, and also serves as a rural rehabilitation specialist with the Easter Seals Farm Program, collaborating with farmers who have disabilities to find ways of overcoming these disabilities so that they may continue in their vocations as successful farmers. And whereas Bruce is very active in the community outside of the Jefferson Fire Department, with both his time and his financial support to many local organizations, including St. Mark's Lutheran Church, the FFA Alumni Association, Tomorrow's Hope, Rainbow Hospice Care, and the Jefferson Food Pantry. And whereas Bruce and his wife Ruth are longtime residents of Jefferson, having raised three beautiful children, Karen, Jeff, and Sally, in the community, of whom they remain very proud. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Opperman and the common council of the city of Jefferson do hereby join with the citizens of Jefferson to express sincere congratulations to firefighter Whitmore on the occasion of being selected first runner-up 2015 Wisconsin firefighter of the year. And be it further resolved that the mayor and common council commend Bruce for his achievement, leadership, and dedicated service to the citizens of Jefferson. Bruce, it's a pleasure to present this to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'd like to say a few words?
Sure.
Please do. I didn't think you'd get all that on a plaque like this. Well, I would certainly like to thank you for this proclamation and showing me your appreciation of what I've done for this city. I've taken it seriously. I think I have put in a lot of time. And it's really great to know that somebody appreciates it and knows what I do. I've worked with three chiefs now, and I always got the impression from each one of them that they really appreciated the job that I did. So I also support, appreciate the support from the council. We have a pretty fine bunch of apparatus and equipment in the fire station. And I really appreciate my fellow members that are helping me. They're always around to help do stuff, having two jobs, a truck driver and a secretary. A lot of times when we get back from calls, they'll go in and take care of my paperwork for the incident. People jump out of the truck, grab brushes and sponges and hose and whatever else, and help me clean the truck or do it for me, and I really appreciate that. Everything that they have helped me do, I certainly appreciate it, and I think we have a pretty darn fine fire department. Again, I appreciate your honoring me this way. I appreciate Ron and the other members who helped write out the application to the State Firefighters Association. I was totally surprised when I got it, and I guess it's been for, it was in the works for over a year. So it was totally a surprise. So thank you very much. I feel very honored that you folks came here and some of your significant others came here tonight to share this time with me. So thank you very much, and I had one comment now. You guys don't have to bow anymore.
I'm hiding. Nice job, Bruce.
I'd like to get the people free. I'm going to take all the firefighters that have been there. I want to make sure that they're service to us. It's a true matter of that gratitude that we don't pay any off the job, so.
Yeah, did it?
Thank you.
I'd like to get the people free. I'm going to try to push up. It's not me, it's the chair.
Okay.
So do we know what this buzz is caused by? Anybody?
Bill, what's your guess?
Notice anything?
I wiggle up. I want to have a lot of work.
All right.
I put the clips back.
It's pretty high-tech. Wiggle it.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move on and read a proclamation. City of Jefferson proclamation regarding Fair Housing Month. Whereas April is traditionally designated as Fair Housing Month, and whereas it is important to reaffirm the commitment of the city of Jefferson regarding citizens' right to buy, sell, rent, or otherwise secure housing in the city of Jefferson without regard to sex, race, religion, marital status, age, national origin, income, or financial status in conformance with Title VIII of the Civil Rights Action of 1968, also known as the Federal Fair Housing Law and State Open Housing Law. Now therefore, I, Mayor Opperman, Mayor of the city of Jefferson, on behalf of the city of Jefferson and its residents, do hereby proclaim April 2015 as Fair Housing Month and encourage all housing providers to support and affirm their commitment to fair housing dated this first day of April 2015. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to proposed ordinance number 3-15, an ordinance to amend Section 300-19B of the municipal code of the city of Jefferson related to the rezoning of a 5.5-acre parcel of Pittsner Parkway. Alderman Miller, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, fellow council members, and citizens. The common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin do ordinate as follows. Section 1, Section 300-19B of the zoning map, city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, which is herein made a part, is amended to change district boundaries of a 5.5-acre parcel of Pittsner Parkway, north of veterinary clinic, Piggly Wiggly, Twice Is Nice, from R1, Single Family Residential District, and AG Agriculture District, to the zoning designation of BHN, Business Highway District. Legal description is on copy in the file of the office of the clerk. Proposed permanent zoning designation is BHN, Business Highway District. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect and be in full force after passage and publication as provided by law and notification and attestation of the district boundary changes incorporated here in the zoning map of the city of Jefferson. This is our first reading.
Thank you. This will be referred to plan commission and then brought back for council consideration at a future date. Proposed ordinance, excuse me. Next, we'll move on to a discussion regarding tax incremental district number 2 projects enclosure. City Administrator Freitag, please.
Thank you very much, Mayor Opperman. I would say that the discussion tonight, I'm not requesting that the council take any action, other than what I really wanted to do is advise what I'm intending to do, and I would plan to move forward unless you tell me not to do this tonight in regard to our tax increment district number 2. I'm going to work off the memo that I think is included in your packet, just some facts about tax increment district number 2. It was created in 1997 as an industrial manufacturing tax increment district. 2020 statutorily is the year the district must close. 2021 is the last revenue year. It's the last year the district generates property taxes. Remember, even though the district closes in 2020, we levy taxes a year in arrears in Wisconsin, so 2021 is the last revenue year. 2015, September of this year, is the close of the district's investment period, meaning this year, up until September, is the last year that the district can be used to fund improvements within its boundaries. The current equalized value of the district as of January 1, 2014, so a year ago, last January, is $10,376,600. I would guess that this January, or the tax base as of this last January 1, when we get those numbers, it'll be close to $11 million, because I know there's some development, like the Cool Tools project, that didn't hit the tax rolls yet. So basically, since the district was created, it will have generated about $11 million. You know, that's $275,000 in property taxes. The fund balance in the district as of 12/31/2014, so a little more than a year ago, was At the end of 2015, after we collect property taxes from this year, there's an estimated $600,000 in cash available. Now, we're going to spend some of that money on some projects for contracts that we recently awarded. And I'll take you to the last page of my memo, and this might make the most sense for you, is that we've awarded contracts to resurface Dewey Avenue. Do we have, I'm sorry, East Perner and North Parkway, and also to undertake preliminary design engineering for Dewey Avenue. Those three contracts collectively are about $420,000. That should leave about $180,000 in fund balance yet to be spent between now and September. So what I'm suggesting we do are two more projects. One, that we replace the bad soils that we know to exist on the lot, couple-acre lot south of American Weld. That's generally shown as lot number four up there, and we want to change out those soils so that that property can ultimately be developed. The estimated cost of doing that is approximately $25,000. And then the other project we want to recommend that we undertake as soon as possible is to extend utilities, water and sewer, down Generac Way to service an approximately five-and-a-half acre lot that really is to the south of Generac Way, running to the property line. And we'd like to undertake that. We estimate the cost to be about $150,000. Between the soils project and the Generac Way utility extension project, the cost is estimated at $175,000. Remember, I said we had 180 remaining, so we should have the funds to undertake those two projects. My sense is, and we'll talk about those two parcels in closed session tonight, potentially there are development projects that exist for that property. Now, some things have to come together for those projects to move forward, but even if they don't, you know, absent changing out soils and extending utilities, the city gets to cut the grass forever, because you can't develop them. So we're going to recommend that we move to undertake those now, so that we can get them completed by September. So that's what I'd really like to do, unless you, as a council, have an objection. The other thing I'm going to suggest that we consider doing, and we might be able to bid out the utility extension project pretty quick, just to make sure that we hit our budget number, and so we have enough funds to do the project. And if we do, I would suggest before May of this year, that the council consider adopting a resolution that would abolish or close the district. And if we do so, this year would be the last revenue year, the last year the district collects taxes, and next January 1, it goes back on the regular tax rolls and the other taxing jurisdictions get a piece of that $275,000 in tax increment. My sense is, there's no debt in the district. The city fathers have done a very good job of managing that district. Absent the city borrowing a bunch of money to do a bunch of projects and using the last four or five years of the district to retire that debt, there's really no reason to keep that district open. All we would do is collect increment. We have nothing to spend it on, and in the end, we're going to have to apportion increment back to the other taxing jurisdictions. So I think we should just close the district, apportion that money back on the normal tax rolls, and as I say, every taxing jurisdiction will benefit. One last thing, I was looking at the original project plan from 1997, and I think there were two of you that were involved in putting that district together, Mayor Opperman, and the second was Margaret Byer.
Yes, I was.
You referred to as Margaret, not Peggy.
Yes.
So that's why I called you Margaret before. And it was uncanny, I was looking at the total anticipated or estimated tax base that could occur in the district, and it was about $10.5 million, which is about what we have today, only we'd be retiring the district several years earlier than anticipated back in 97, when it was put together. But that's my sense of what we should do, try to undertake those two projects pretty quickly. I think Bill can undertake that for us, and I think we should just take steps to close the district, put that back on the regular tax rolls, and the other jurisdictions will benefit.
Any questions of Tim? Okay, we'll bring that forward for consideration at a future meeting. Thank you, Tim. Next, we'll move on to resolution number 113, the consent agenda. Alderman Byer, please.
Honorable Mayor, council members and citizens, city of Jefferson, resolution number 113. Be it resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the consent agenda for March 31, 2015, is hereby adopted. The consent agenda for tonight includes vouchers payable for March 2015 in the amount of $31,236 and $630,695. February manual checks in the amount of $2,978, and payroll summary for March 6, 2015 in the amounts of $137,965, and March 20, 2015, in the amount of $150,372. Council minutes from March 3, 2015, meetings of the common council, licenses as approved by the regulatory committee. We had operators license for Samantha Godinger for Speedway, Monica Menke for Heron's Landing, and Shane Splitgerber for Main Street Station. We had a six-month license, beer license for Blue Devils for Fisher Field for April 1 through October, and we had beer license for Jefferson Rotary Club for Concerts in the Park, June 4, 11, 18, 21, and July 2, 9, 16, 23, 30, and August 6, 13, 20, and 27, so you know where to be. And Jefferson Rotary Club's street dance, the city center park lot location, alternate location would be the Business Center on July 25, 2015. I would so move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Roth, discussion? There being none, all in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye as Rita calls your name, know if you're opposed.
Lars?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Roth?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye. It's unanimous, thank you. Resolution number 114, a resolution authorizing the city administrator to make budget adjustments for fiscal year 2014. Finance Committee Chairman Peachey, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Opperman, fellow council members and citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson, resolution number 114. Be it resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that it herein authorizes the city administrator to make the following adjustments to the fiscal year 2014 final audit. First one, combined funds, 49 redevelopment fund and 54 development fund into one fund, which would be titled Development Fund. Reactivate Fund, 47 land acquisition fund, and transfer $160,000 of general fund balance to the fund for future land acquisition. And the last one, write off a cash advance made from the general fund to the development fund for the loans issued out of the development fund in the amount of $109,544. I would so move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Kraus, discussion? Tim?
Yep. I'll just take a couple of quick minutes to add a little additional comment to Paul's reading of the resolution. This really has to do with the city's fund balance. Currently, the city's general 2014 audit is nearing completion. The wastewater and stormwater utility audits have generally been completed, and the Jefferson Utilities Power and Water Audit has also been completed. So the last thing to do, there's a little money that moves back and forth between those entities, but the numbers that I'll discuss won't change much. We're a little ahead of last year, in part because through some office reorganization, Tanya has just had more time to spend on the auditors and working with Baker Tilly to get us in a position to, I think, to adopt these documents earlier than the typical year. Some of the discussion, I think I can just undertake myself, but other parts of it really are needing to be authorized or approved via resolution adopted by the council, and that's the part that Paul read a few minutes ago. But generally speaking, I would make the comment that the city's fund balance at the conclusion of 2014 is at a pretty bullish level. Between its assigned and unassigned fund balance, we're really talking about $2.1 million. And I would tip my hat to you and to the finance committee and previous councils and finance committees, because, you know, seven years ago, that number was below $700,000. So the city's worked really, really hard in a tough economic time, right? It's hard to build fund balance when the economy's been as poor as it has for parts of those past five, six, seven years. So I think you've really done a great job. It's about thirty-some percent of our annual expenditures, that's in excess of our own policy of wanting to maintain unassigned fund balance of about 25% of annual expenditures, and certainly allows us the cash flow of the organization and maintains, you know, pretty darn good bond rating that's been assigned by Moody's to the city. The next thing that I'll discuss that is going to be reflected in the final audit is that tax increment number six, that's the St. Coletta TID, is generating tax increment. It will really generate a lot of tax increment next year, because the memory care facility, I'm sure that's a three-to-four million dollar facility, is going to hit the tax rolls this last January 1, and of course, taxes will be paid next year. But in the audit, we'll be using that district to reimburse the general fund $60,000 as partial repayment for funds previously advanced for the medical college project, and that's the way the resolutions were approved. And I would think it's about four more years until those funds have been recovered, as I think the plan has always been. So that will be reflected. The next thing that I want to chat a little bit about, and this is a council action, I don't think I can do this, but the city has kind of two economic development funds. One is called Downtown Development Fund. That's an old fund, goes way, way back. We don't use it anymore. We typically use tax increment district number five, if we want to do some economic development activity downtown. And then we have the development fund, which we do use. We suggest just to consolidate them both into one fund, and that is being suggested. And then lastly, the city does have in its fund accounting system, an old land acquisition fund. We haven't used it for a long time. Never used it since I've been here. I don't know when the last time it was used. But it is in our fund accounting structure. I'm suggesting that we move $160,000 from general fund balance into that land acquisition fund, and those funds would be used to purchase a piece of property that we've been discussing, that probably you discuss again at your April 21 meeting. And if for some reason the city doesn't want to go ahead and purchase that property, then I would say, I know that we're going to have to do something in terms of industrial land expansion, and it'd be nice to build as big a cash balance as we can to fund that endeavor down the line. So either it gets used to purchase this piece of property we've been discussing, or we keep trying to build this fund balance in hopes of doing something in terms of industrial land expansion in the future. But I can't do that, and that would take a council action, and if you adopt the resolution, you know, the final audits will reflect that action.
Thank you, Tim. Anyone have any questions of Tim? I'd just like to go back with particular emphasis on tax incremental district number six, the fund balance there, just so that everyone is aware, especially the public and the media can help us get the word out. This is the means by which the city has reimbursed for some of the money that was initially invested into the first incarnation of the medical college. So that $250,000 that was not thrown away, it was invested, and through the Tiff District there, and the increment that is generated, it is being paid back to the city. So this is the first $60,000 installment of that 250 that's going to be reimbursed to the city by the Tiff District. Does anyone have any other questions of Tim? Okay, seeing none. We have a motion and a second for passage of resolution number 114. If there are no other questions or comments, all in favor of passage, please signify by saying aye as Rita calls your name, know if you're opposed.
Lars?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Roth?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye. It's unanimous, thank you. Resolution number 115, a resolution to authorize specific budget adjustments from the general fund. Once again, Alderman Peachey, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Opperman, fellow council members and citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson, resolution number 115. Be it resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the following 2014 budget adjustments are hereby authorized and shall be funded out of the general fund balance. Due to its length, in lieu of reading the complete text of this resolution, a complete copy is on file at the office of the city clerk and available for public inspection. Be it further resolved that the above budget adjustments are funded out of the respective fund balances, I would so move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Horn, discussion? Tim?
I think the only thing I would add is that they're budget adjustments for the 2014 budget year. We typically do these every year, and it's kind of annual cleanup of our books that we try to do before finalizing the audit.
Okay. Anyone have any questions or comments? There being none, all in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye as Rita calls your name, know if you're opposed.
Horn?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Roth?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye. It's unanimous, thank you. Resolution number 115, a resolution to authorize specific budget adjustments from the general fund. Once again, Alderman Peachey, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Opperman, fellow council members and citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson, resolution number 115. Be it resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the following 2014 budget adjustments are hereby authorized and shall be funded out of the general fund balance. Due to its length, in lieu of reading the complete text of this resolution, a complete copy is on file at the office of the city clerk and available for public inspection. Be it further resolved that the above budget adjustments are funded out of the respective fund balances, I would so move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Horn, discussion? Tim?
I think the only thing I would add is that they're budget adjustments for the 2014 budget year. We typically do these every year, and it's kind of annual cleanup of our books that we try to do before finalizing the audit.
Okay. Anyone have any questions or comments? There being none, all in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye as Rita calls your name, know if you're opposed.
Horn?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Roth?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you. Resolution number 115, a resolution to authorize specific budget adjustments from the general fund. Once again, Alderman Peachey, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Opperman, fellow council members and citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson, resolution number 115. Be it resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the following 2014 budget adjustments are hereby authorized and shall be funded out of the general fund balance. Due to its length, in lieu of reading the complete text of this resolution, a complete copy is on file at the office of the city clerk and available for public inspection. Be it further resolved that the above budget adjustments are funded out of the respective fund balances, I would so move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Horn, discussion? Tim?
I think the only thing I would add is that they're budget adjustments for the 2014 budget year. We typically do these every year, and it's kind of annual cleanup of our books that we try to do before finalizing the audit.
Okay. Anyone have any questions or comments? There being none, all in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye as Rita calls your name, know if you're opposed.
Horn?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Roth?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you. Resolution number 115, a resolution to authorize specific budget adjustments from the general fund. Once again, Alderman Peachey, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Opperman, fellow council members and citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson, resolution number 115. Be it resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the following 2014 budget adjustments are hereby authorized and shall be funded out of the general fund balance. Due to its length, in lieu of reading the complete text of this resolution, a complete copy is on file at the office of the city clerk and available for public inspection. Be it further resolved that the above budget adjustments are funded out of the respective fund balances, I would so move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Horn, discussion? Tim?
I think the only thing I would add is that they're budget adjustments for the 2014 budget year. We typically do these every year, and it's kind of annual cleanup of our books that we try to do before finalizing the audit.
Okay. Anyone have any questions or comments? There being none, all in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye as Rita calls your name, know if you're opposed.
Horn?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
We typically do these every year, and it's kind of annual cleanup of our books that we try to do before finalizing the audit.
Anyone have any questions or comments? There being none, all in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye as Rita calls your name, no if you're opposed.
Horn?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Routh?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Routh?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Resolution Number 116, a resolution to award a bid for the City of Jefferson Library Construction Project. Library Board Member, Alderman Horn, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, citizens of Jefferson, and City Council. Resolution to award bid for City of Jefferson Library Construction Project. Whereas the City of Jefferson, Jefferson Public Library received three bids from interested contractors for the Jefferson Public Library Work Room Remodeling Project, whereas the bid ranged from $52,300 to $55,000, and alternate bids from $644 to $1,042. Whereas McKee Associates was the lowest responsible bidder at $52,300 for the base bid. Whereas the Jefferson Public Library Board has approved McKee Associates as the lowest qualified responsible bidder for the room remodeling. Whereas it's been determined that it is in the best interest of the Jefferson Public Library and the City of Jefferson that the alternate bid not be awarded. Now therefore, be resolved by the McKee Associates is the lowest qualified responsible bidder at $52,300, and the Jefferson Public Library Director and Library Board Presidents are hereby authorized to execute any contracts for the construction project upon review and consent of the city attorney. I so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Byer, discussion?
As stated, the Library Board was unanimous on the McKee Associates.
Thank you, Jim. This was reviewed by Finance as well? Oh, I'm sorry. I was committee the hall earlier.
Yes.
Yeah, sorry.
No problem.
Okay. If there are no other questions or comments, all in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye as Rita calls your name, no if you're opposed.
Kraus?
Aye.
Routh?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Resolution Number 117, a resolution authorizing a feasibility study for the creation of a tax increment district. Alderman Routh, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Upperman, fellow council members and citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson Resolution Number 117, authorizing feasibility study for creation of tax increment district. Whereas the City of Jefferson has been reviewing redevelopment options for a portion of the west side of the community, including the preparation of a preliminary west side development plan concept. And whereas the planning area for the west side development plan concept generally includes the following areas. North Boundaries, Spangler Road. South Boundaries, West Highway 18, which is also known to local citizens as West Recede Street. East Boundary, Jackson Street. West Boundary, Pittsner Parkway. And whereas the Finance Committee has determined that this area has the potential to generate substantial property tax base and significant job creation, and it is recommending that the City of Jefferson undertake a feasibility analysis to determine whether creation of a tax increment district is a statutorily and financially feasible option to promote new development within the planning area. And whereas the Finance Committee recommends retaining ailers and associates to undertake and complete the tax increment district feasibility analysis at a cost of $5,200. And now therefore, be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Jefferson, that it herein approves an agreement to provide tax incremental financing services with ailers and associates, and specifically authorizes completion of the feasibility study, referenced as scope of service phase one in the agreement of a cost of $5,200. Be it further resolved by the Common Council, that the city administrator is authorized to execute said agreement on behalf of the City of Jefferson. I so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Peachey, discussion?
We talked about earlier that we were going to accept the increase due to the number of people bidding, even though our budget is only $1,200,000.
That would be correct. When we originally rejected these bids, when we put it back out to bid, the overall cost of the project dropped about $100,000. At this point, our recommendation would be to accept the bid based on the cost of the second and third bidders being over $1.6 billion.
Thank you, Bill. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Well, it's a big project, and it's been a long time coming, so. All in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye as Rita calls your name, no if you're opposed.
Routh?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Resolution Number 118, a resolution authorizing a feasibility study for the creation of a tax increment district. Alderman Routh, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Upperman, fellow council members and citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson Resolution Number 118, authorizing feasibility study for creation of tax increment district. Whereas the City of Jefferson has been reviewing redevelopment options for a portion of the west side of the community, including the preparation of a preliminary west side development plan concept. And whereas the planning area for the west side development plan concept generally includes the following areas. North Boundaries, Spangler Road. South Boundaries, West Highway 18, which is also known to local citizens as West Recede Street. East Boundary, Jackson Street. West Boundary, Pittsner Parkway. And whereas the Finance Committee has determined that this area has the potential to generate substantial property tax base and significant job creation, and it is recommending that the City of Jefferson undertake a feasibility analysis to determine whether creation of a tax increment district is a statutorily and financially feasible option to promote new development within the planning area. And whereas the Finance Committee recommends retaining ailers and associates to undertake and complete the tax increment district feasibility analysis at a cost of $5,200. And now therefore, be it resolved by the Common Council, that it herein approves an agreement to provide tax incremental financing services with ailers and associates, and specifically authorizes completion of the feasibility study, referenced as scope of service phase one in the agreement of a cost of $5,200. Be it further resolved by the Common Council, that the city administrator is authorized to execute said agreement on behalf of the City of Jefferson. I so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Peachey, discussion?
Do you want to unplug this?
You might do this one.
No, I think it's that one.
Why don't you unplug that, too?
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks for trying.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay.
Short drive, Jim.
We will move on forward. Any questions about this, comments? There being none, all in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye as Rita calls your name, no if you're opposed.
Byer?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Routh?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Resolution Number 119, a resolution to approve a new biosolids hauler for the wastewater treatment plant. Alderman Lars, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, fellow council members, citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson Resolution 119, a resolution to approve a new biosolid hauler for wastewater treatment plant. Whereas the City of Jefferson, after noticing and letting out its disposal of wastewater treatment hauling biosolids bid, awarded the three-year contract to the lowest responsible bidder, Sunstone's Pit Plumbing, on April 2nd, 2014. Whereas for whatever reason, Sunstone's Pit Plumbing neglected or failed to haul biosolids as requested by the wastewater superintendent under the terms of the contract. Whereas of January 22nd, 2015, the city caused a certified letter to be sent to Sunstone's Pit Plumbing informing them of the material failure to uphold in their end of the contract, suggesting that mutual mediator and notifying them that $2,658 incurred by the city, the City of Jefferson, has not received any response from the certified mail received by them on or about January 26th, 2015. Whereas additionally, at the time of the city notified Sunstone's Pit Plumbing that the contract would be terminated within 30 days of February 23rd, 2015, unless mediation was requested under the terms of the contract. Whereas the next lowest responsible bidder under the biosolids bid proposal was BiTech Inc. at 1037 8th Avenue, Monroe, Wisconsin 53566. Whereas the wastewater superintendent has been in contact with BiTech Inc., who would agree to honor the bid submitted and the terms of the remainder of the two-year contract, including December 31st, 2016, and adding three additional years thereafter to terminate December 31st, 2019. Now therefore, be resolved by the City of Jefferson Common Council and hereby terminates the contract with Sunstone's Pit Plumbing and authorize the City of Jefferson wastewater superintendent and the city administrator to enter into contract with BiTech Inc. of Monroe, Wisconsin, after the review of the city attorney. I so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Horn, in discussion? Superintendent Clark, did you have anything to add?
Pretty reliable company, we've used it in the past.
Okay.
The $2,657.90 incurred by the city, obviously we haven't heard anything back from the original company. Will we continue to pursue that? Attorney Brandmeyer?
I don't, I mean, the entity, from my understanding, is defunct. So at the direction of the council, I gladly continue to pursue that, but that's, I don't know that you want to spend more money against bad money. I can bring that back for a discussion, though, if you want to.
Okay. Good question. Any other questions or comments? There being none, all in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye as the clerk calls your name, no if you're opposed.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Routh?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Resolution Number 120, a resolution to authorize a loan from the City of Jefferson Revolving Loan Fund for Anderson Machining Services, Inc. Alderman Kraus, please.
Thank you again, Honorable Mayor, fellow council members and citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson Resolution Number 120, authorizing loan from the City of Jefferson Revolving Loan Fund for Anderson Machining Service, Inc., Susan and Ronald Anderson applicants. Whereas the City of Jefferson received a loan application for the Jefferson Revolving Loan Fund program from Anderson Machining Service, Inc., hereafter Anderson, in the amount of $130,562.50, Ronald and Susan Anderson applicants. And whereas the proceeds of the loan will finance in part the purchase of four additional Makino machining centers, CNC machines. And whereas bank financing has been secured to finance the difference between the total project cost, which is estimated at $261,125, and the requested city funding. And whereas Anderson is committed to creating a minimum of seven new positions, of which a minimum of 51% of these positions will be made available to low and moderate income people within the next 12 months. And whereas the Anderson application has been reviewed by the Revolving Loan Fund Program Independent Review Authority, Mr. Ron Van Stratten, who is recommending approval of the loan. And whereas the Jefferson Revolving Loan Fund Review Committee considered the Anderson loan application at a meeting of its members and is recommending approval of the loan to the Jefferson Common Council, finding the project will strengthen the economic base of the City of Jefferson by increasing manufacturing employment and expanding employment indirectly through additional purchases by Anderson Machining as well as their employees. And now therefore, be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that it herein approves the Anderson Machining Services, Inc. loan application per the following terms. A loan amount of $130,562.50, over an enterization period of five years, with an interest rate fixed at 2%, and a period being quarterly payments of equal amounts. The loan guarantee is an unlimited personal guarantee from Susan and Ron Anderson, personal guarantee limited to the value of the loan, and purchase money security interest in the four machine centers to be purchased with the loan proceeds. And project creating a minimum of seven new positions, of which a minimum of 51% will be made available to low and moderate income people for a period of two years following approval of the loan. Be it further resolved by the Common Council, that the city administrator is herein authorized to sign all documents associated with this transaction on behalf of the City of Jefferson, upon the review of said documents by and with the consent of the city attorney. I would so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Lars, discussion?
Anderson Machinery has always been good with us, been paying back on time, and another good, good win between the company and the city.
Thank you. Anyone else? Tim, did you have any comments?
No, I don't think so.
We've got a, we do have a good track record with Anderson Machining, our terrific local employer. So if there are no other questions or comments, all in favor of Resolution Number 120, please signify by saying aye as Rita calls your name, no if you're opposed.
Miller?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Routh?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Thank you. We will adjourn to closed session. We will not be doing any more business in open session this evening.